Before we get to the interview, everybody, I just want to let you know I'm Dave Bondi, independent journalist. Please help support my independent journalism and click the link down below to join my Substack or my Locals community. It's only five bucks a month. You can quit at any time. I left the mainstream media in order to keep it real. Ramona, thank you. Ramona Bessinger, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for having me. Thank you so much.
So I first found you on X or Twitter. There was a video that you had posted. You didn't record it, though. It was from a public meeting, right?
It was a public meeting that I took, I made the clip from. So these meetings are posted to YouTube and I just grabbed it when I heard the comments.
So I want to play it for people, but before, you're in Rhode Island, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And some of the issues you're experiencing were, for a minute there, I thought these were only issues like in Seattle or in LA, but we're starting to hear about this in other parts of the country, including Rhode Island, I guess?
Yes. Rhode Island, I would say it's worldwide at this point, Western worldwide, anyway.
Yeah. And you are currently, are you a teacher in that district?
I'm a teacher in Providence. The district where I took the clip from is North Kingstown. That is the school district where my kids have gone. And I currently have one student, one child left in the, in, in school. So paying close attention to everything that they're doing and heard her make that comment and felt that this was something I needed to shed light on.
So before I play it, excuse me, set this up. What are people about to see and hear? What is this? There's one woman speaking. I think she's on the left side of the screen. She's a, what, is she a board member?
She's a newly appointed, newly appointed, I might add, board member. And basically, that evening, we were into the fourth hour of the school committee meeting. And yeah, four hours. And at the end of the, or the beginning of the fourth hour, they started talking about the gender non-conforming policy. And that is in quotes, that is the transgender or gender non-conforming policy that they were about to pass. And so I, myself and several other parents were very concerned about this policy, about the contents of it and what exactly the policy would mean for all children, but obviously our own children as well. And so sometime around the fourth hour, as they were going on and on and on, this school committee member decided to weigh in in, on one, one of the points that was written into this policy. And that is the student privacy and parental notification content of the policy. So of course, my ears perked up. And she actually said exactly what we've all been afraid of. She said out loud, I couldn't believe it. And I felt, well, this is very, very important for the world, as many people as possible to see and hear. So people know that this isn't just hyperbole or people, a few parents, disgruntled parents. This is a national outcry we're seeing from parents against things that are happening in our K-12 schools. And here was a school committee member actually saying some of those concerns out loud. And specifically, she was speaking about children in schools, K through 12 schools that go to adults in the building that they call point team members. In other words, you know, strangers maybe that are, and I say strangers because they are in fact strangers, a teacher that a student may or may not know, psychologists, psychiatrists. They have teams assigned to students. And a student would go up to, presumably, a student would go up to the point team to discuss his or her confusion or, or desire to transition or have medical intervention or take hormones or whatever. And if that student says he or she does not want mom or dad to, to be aware or to know that they're having these conversations or thoughts, then this point team or the teachers and administration will conceal that information from the parents. And that was at that moment that she actually reiterated or sort of parroted what was in the policy, which was, oh no, never tell parents, do not involve parents. I mean, she, she basically was saying, you know?
Let me, let me play this. And I put captions on the screen. So if people couldn't hear it, I had a caption. So I'm going to play this. What's it like almost two minutes maybe or no?
About that, yes.
Okay. You, you and I will be up on the screen, but I'll, I'll play this here for everyone. So I'm going to put this up right now. And then I'll, I'll come back afterward and we can talk.
I don't think parents should be notified simply because society assumes that every child has a well-meaning family culture that is accepting of this. Sometimes the worst thing you can do is involve a parent in some of these issues based on their own beliefs and their own culture. And that will cause that student to commit suicide. If you tell a student who's trusted you, who has come out to say that I'm a lesbian, and you now go back and tell the parent that child has no faith in that school system ever again and will never come forward with any information. And his second recommendation or the third recommendation or where is it here that they should have documentation from their parent or their, their physician or their guidance counselor. I can tell you for a fact, as a medical provider, I would never have provided that documentation to the school because it does appear that now you're segregating out this child and you're, you're comparing, you're trying to say that this is a disability. This is who they are. And this is not like to set up even an IEP for them or anything. You're now saying that what you're doing has a stigma to it and it's wrong. Look at what the disabled students go through for normalization. These kids are normal. There's, this is just who they are. It's, I mean, that's just the way it is. So my point would be that we never notify a parent on these issues unless the child's life is in danger. And then I think we have to err on the side of implied consent. That if we need to, we have to, you know? If I know this student truly is going to be suicidal, they've attempted, yeah, I'm going to notify the parents. Actually, you're not probably notifying anybody. The hospital and the emergency services are going to handle all of that. But I, I don't think we should notify parents on many issues that we notify parents on.
Wow. But even just the last line, there are a lot of people watching right now in the comments are saying they couldn't hear it, but that's why I put the captions on there. But that line at the end, right there, where is it? I don't, I don't think we should notify parents on many issues that we notify parents on. What the heck is, that is just, I mean, what else does she not want to tell parents about?
Well, and, and it was very, you know, consider she was saying only notify parents if there's consent or a child is about to commit suicide. So you're going to, she's actually saying that parents should not be involved in a child's mental breakdown or, or psychosis or gender dysphoria, I think is the term, or psychological problems until a child is about to commit suicide. I mean, you can't even, it's completely terrifying to me to think of, you know, these sorts of decisions being made without parental consent. You have to wonder what other things are happening.
Now, some people will argue, oh, this, this is the exception. This isn't happening in every school district. And I would hope it's not happening in every school district, but it seems like we're hearing about it more and more. Is it, is it, is it spreading? It sounds like it is.
Well, the policy comes from state guidance. And the state guidance comes from the federal government. And I believe there's, there, there's an interpretation from the federal government that is provided to every state. It's related to the Title IX interpretation and FERPA interpretation. And the districts are told by their department, their boards of education that they must comply with this guidance and create a policy that follows their interpretation of Title IX and FERPA laws. And so they're choosing to interpret this in this way, to create a policy that in effect separates K through 12 children from their families. And it is not just my school district in North Kingstown. This is happening all over the state. And it just so happens, the policies are the same, the mindset is the same of the school, school committee members. And I would probably, I guess this is also happening in every other state, including, you know, states that you wouldn't even think it could be happening, like Tennessee and Florida, where, you know, red states, I suppose, or conservative states. Versions of this policy that actually alien, you know, alienates children from parents while they're at school is, this is happening everywhere. It's just, if you were to write a letter and say, could you please tell me if this is happening? Are you alienating students or my child from, from the family? They're most likely going to say, of course we're not, you know, because, you know, that's, they, they want to conceal this. But in this case, this school committee member probably figured, well, it's four hours into the meeting. No one's here. No one's listening. And, you know, luckily for me, we were...
Yeah, thank God. Someone just said in the comments, so is this all about federal money? In a way, it kind of, I guess, is if it's, if it's coming from the top then because school districts are worried they'll lose federal money or I...
Yes.
Yeah, I'm reading the other, the comments here. Pushing this agenda on kids too young, too young to comprehend will cause confusion, depression, and then suicide possibly.
Yes.
And here in Michigan, I'm in Michigan, you're in Rhode Island. In Michigan, they're doing a thing where they're building, or they're having medical clinics in, in schools. And there's a part of the legislation that just changed as to where they do not have to tell parents when it comes to certain mental health issues or even pregnancy issues. And when I did a story on that, the, the, the people who didn't like me reporting it, they said, they would say, well, what about the abusive parents or the children who are in abusive situations and they, they can't tell their parents? How do you, how, how do you respond to something like that? Because they always, the people always say to that, well, the kids are in danger at home, but there's, there's other ways of reporting things. I just, I don't know. That's what the other side will say. Well, they're, they can't trust the parents, but I don't know.
Well, that's ridiculous because that's why we have 911 and DCYF. DCYF is the agency that I am professionally obliged to call as a teacher if I, if I see or hear, you know, some sort of abusive situation. I am obliged by law to report any, you know, any trauma or any abuse or anything that I feel constitutes legal action or whatever, or, you know, requires intervention. I report to my administrators and report to DCYF.
Yeah, because you are a, what is it, mandatory reporter, right?
That's, that's correct. Yes.
I learned about mandatory reporters when I covered the Jerry Sandusky trial at Penn State University years ago. I lived in Pennsylvania and there were so many who did not report and who should have. So the laws are, it's like the southern border. The laws are already in place to prevent this from happening. So that argument is really moot then, kind of.
It's moot. And the alternative that those naysayers are suggesting is that children trust adults that they themselves don't know. You know, those adults, those point team adults that exist in the school to provide medical intervention or medical services or referrals. They don't know that child. They have no history. They might've met that particular child that year in school. And they, they don't have the, you know, the skills that a medical, a doctor or a family member would have. Children go through all sorts of stages. They invent things. They go through depression. They go through anxiety. They go through different personality changes or different, you know, they're trying on different hats and they have very, you know, active imaginations. They go through all kinds of different stages. What are we to capture them at every juncture and every point of transition and normal childhood development? Are we to capture that and turn it into something that needs to be separated out and, and referred out to a state agency? I think that this is very dangerous. And I think it marks the beginning of, of a bigger picture or a bigger problem. And that is that they're moving to, to sort of separate children from families and to have more control over the child. So for example, that, just to speak to the clinics that you were talking about, these clinics are popping up in, I think the majority of them are in urban communities. And, and I think the law states that, and I don't know 100% if I'm 100% correct, but I think the law states that if a child is receiving Medicaid or state aid in any way, then it's, then, then the teacher and the staff at the school have the right to, to, you know, refer a child to a medical service without parental knowledge. So I think that there's a lot of things that are happening currently in the school that, you know, parents need to pay attention to or they could lose their children.
It's scary. And I know, I think Washington State actually passed that law or California as well. But it's happened. Someone just sent the questions, if I hear about this in my son's school, what can I do? Well, I think people need to start speaking up. And what would you suggest as for parents? What should parents do? Get more, get involved, obviously, to find out what is happening?
Well, I don't think there's any one, one suggestion, but I'll tell you what I did. And that is I made my presence known in a very, you know, in a way that I feel is reasonable and polite. I don't think that I, you know, I think that it's important to remain polite and sincere. So I sent a series of emails listing my concerns about these policy items, about the coed bathrooms, allowing boys and girls to share bathrooms and locker rooms and share the same sports teams. I voiced my opinion as a professional, but mostly as a mother. And, and I feel making your presence known and, and, and it, you know, let, let the administration know that you are there and you're supporting your child so that they don't get the idea that, you know, your child or a particular child is vulnerable and may be able to be separated out. There is a real, you know, so I think approaching it from a sincere and polite way is the best way to do it. And do not, I will say this to all your listeners, do not accept a blanket statement from a superintendent that, oh no, this isn't happening at our school. Demand to see the policy, demand to see the curriculum content and make sure that you get evidence for the questions that you are asking because they will lie to parents. We see this across the nation.
It's sad. Now, you are currently a teacher and it has to be difficult for you to speak out about this because you're probably getting some pushback from many people?
Yes. I've been speaking out about this for the past two and a half years. I started speaking out about this in the, during the school year 2020, 21. First, I reached out to my administrators. Then I reached out to the superintendent's office. I then reached out to the Senate Oversight Committee. Every step of the way, I received quite a bit of hostile opposition from various, you know, people in my education community. And eventually I was protested after a year by students that I actually never had. I didn't even know. Several teachers organized a student protest that resulted in death threats to myself, death threats to my family. Terrible, terrible things were said about me, calling me a racist, a transphobe. And nothing of the sort is true. And my teaching record would prove that. But more importantly, I have a lot, you know, I'm, I'm more concerned about the human element of this. I'm concerned for all children, my own children, children of every culture, every, you know, every religion. No one is going to be safe if we allow this K-12 agenda to continue to become embedded in all the schools. We have to speak out. And that is what I've continued to do, even though it's been at a great risk to my safety, at a great risk to my family. I feel I don't have a choice but to speak out. And so I recommend that every parent get involved. Do not, do not, this is not the time to be afraid. We need men involved, women, you know, everybody has to do their part here. Otherwise, you know, we're going to lose one, our country, and two, you run the risk of losing your children.
And it's not about the fact, and I've been, when I post or when I do this interview with you, people may say, you know, I'm transphobic, I'm racist, I'm whatever. And I have, it's, it's not about that whatsoever. I think, I respect everyone. Everyone has the right to do as they please. I'm very religious. I have certain morals and values, but that's me. And I'm not going to make you do something. But I, for my children, though, my morals and values, I hope to be their morals and values as well. But I'm not negative or racist against, that's not what it's about. It's about, when I think of school, I think of math, English, science, certain, you know, history even. But this is just strange for me that this, this comes in. That's not what school should be. In Seattle, I think they said that the number of children who recognized as, identified as transgender went up by 1,800%. I mean, I know how kids are. Kids like going, doing the coolest thing. When I was even in high school, I used to listen to rap music because my one friend did. Kids can be influenced at age, all ages. I mean, it's, it's, it's just, it's concerning. And I, I don't understand, and I know why people easily will call you those names or call me those names, but that's not what it's about. And it, you try to understand people. It's just about letting a kid be a kid and forge their own path, right? And not interfere with what's going on up here.
That's right. And not make assumptions about a child's, you know, psychological state or perceived psychological state. We are not medical professionals as teachers. And even the medical professionals in the schools, like a psychiatrist or a therapist, they are not qualified to make these, you know, definitive judgments that may affect a child's body and, you know, health. No one in the school setting is qualified to do that, especially when you consider that they may have just met this child and are evaluating and making lifelong medical decisions for a child. This is wrong. And we're seeing, you know, levels of anxiety on the rise. We're seeing children, you know, feeling very disconnected. Well, it's because when they go to school, they're not only, you know, is this weird sort of inappropriate sexual content all around them, but they're being told that their country is bad. You know, white children are being told that they are bad. And, you know, it's the division and the, and the confusion that is being caused. It really needs to be addressed. So this segment from the school committee meeting is one tiny segment of the absolute, complete, utter insanity that has taken over K-12 education, especially here in Rhode Island and Washington State and, you know, other states around the country. You know, some states are probably worse than others. We are just, yeah.
When I was, I was in journalism for 25 years and my thing was, when I would report the news, I, I was accused of being a Democrat, a Republican, an independent, which meant I was doing my job. My job was to give the viewers information from all sides and let them decide. It wasn't my job as a journalist to give my opinion. I think that's maybe kind of what teaching, like, for example, you, or let's say you like candidate X. It's not your job to tell your students, you all need to go vote for, what, what, I mean, has teaching changed? Are they teaching in college with teachers? Or how did it morph into something? When I was a kid, teachers, literally, I never knew what happened behind, to my teachers. It was weird to even see them out in public. And I literally just got math, science, history, and I didn't really get into any of the social stuff when I was a kid.
Never. You would never do that.
How did it, how did it change?
Well, as I said, sometime around 2020, 21, everything shifted. They brought in something called social emotional learning. And under that massive umbrella of social emotional learning was this pseudo ridiculous science that they injected into the curriculum. And they suggested to teachers to get to know kids, really get to know them. In fact, in my district, they wanted teachers to go door knocking and go make home visits. Well, you know, and, and also there was the textbooks and the curriculum had all sorts of political content that I felt was inappropriate, just to speak to what you just said. It is not our job to, to share our political beliefs with students. If a student brings a political belief up or asks a teacher what her, what his or her political persuasion may be, it's very important to remain neutral so that you create a space where a student is respected and feels respected and doesn't feel that he or she has to adhere to what the teacher thinks or says because they're children. The power dynamic is, you know, asymmetrical. So if a teacher says they're communist or Marxist, most likely you're going to, you're going to influence a student to think that way. So it is very, very important to be politically neutral in the classroom at all times. And certainly, you know, counseling students about whatever problems they may come to you with or medical advice, that should be, you know, an offense that, that would, you know, in the past, prior to 2020, I would have lost my teaching license and rightly so. So, yeah, I mean, it's, yeah.
Wow. So, yeah, well, that, it's good that we're discussing it. I'm going to send you the link and I'll post this on all the other platforms as well. But also, like, for example, I'm on TikTok and all these, there's some platforms that don't want to hear this sort of thing, like X and Twitter and that. So I'm glad, I'm on Locals right now, which is an independent journalism type platform. But I think, I think people are beginning to notice yourself and others. And the one account that retweeted you or whatever, the libs of TikTok, the media labels them as a hate group or the, and they, and that, that woman that runs that page is literally just reposting videos, like this public video I posted. You didn't use a hidden camera with this thing. This, that video, this video was public. It was on their YouTube page.
Yes. I just shared what they said, what their intentions were.
And they said it, yeah, they said it out loud. Do you know if anything's happened? Like, have they got any pushback or that woman or?
Yes. Some great pushback. And, and thank you for asking that because, you know, just when we were feeling, you know, this whole discussion about the policy that they were about to pass, they did a second reading, they passed a second reading, and now it's going to go to a final vote. We were all feeling a little despondent. And to hear her speak these words and to confirm what we've all known to be true, that they are in fact, trying to separate children from families. And whether, whether they denied it or not, we actually heard her say it. To hear that made all of us, I think none of us slept well that night. And so I made the clip and, you know, worked on it very early in the morning and then tweeted it out, really not, sort of tweeting it out for my community and for teachers in Rhode Island and families in Rhode Island to see, mostly moms in North Kingstown and dads in North Kingstown. And, you know, it was just astounding to me that, that libs of TikTok picked it up and shared. I was very happy to, to, to learn about that.
Yeah. And, and, and more parents need to show up at meetings or even watch the meetings online because in working in TV news, we would cover lots of school board meetings. It wouldn't be sad because there would be no one at the meetings. So parents now need to be the watchdogs of, and, and you're a teacher. You probably, you probably have dealt with a lot of parents that are critical of you, but I'm assuming you, you like having parent involvement. Even some of the crazy ones probably, but it, it's good when parents are involved. But it seems like with that school board or some, it seemed like they don't want the parents involved, which is...
No, they don't. Because when you're holding meetings for four hours and discussing agenda items that take four and a half hours to discuss, clearly, they are intentionally making these meetings so long that the average person cannot stay up until 11:30 at night. Just happened to be, I was working on a project and I had the time and another parent, she was also watching and we were discussing... and I had the time and another parent, she was also watching and we were discussing back and forth and we could not believe just the entire discussion that they were having. And then finally, she she made that comment, but I I really can't suggest and and say strong enough that every parent has to get involved. Do not give up and do not think it's not happening at your school. You need to know what the policies are. Ask them for a copy of every single policy related to gender, medical, and, you know, anything to do with medical um treatments or just just get your, get on the committees, send emails and do not be intimidated, never ever back down.
Uh, and that last thing, in Michigan at least, parents are, they're homeschooling, they're going to either private schools or charter schools. I guess it's no surprise, right? When they they experience things like this, and that's really sad because there are great teachers out there. Um, but I don't know if they're pressured as well because of the system, but it seems like, like in Michigan, the, um, well, Randy Weingarten, the president of the teachers' union, I think she's shocked that so many children are leaving the public school system, but she should do an inside look maybe at her, at the own system and maybe she would know then what's going on.
She doesn't really, she probably really does know. How could you not? But she's, her job is to keep the money flowing into the union. And so less children means less teachers means less money for the teachers' union. It's a scam. She is corrupt. The entire teacher union is corrupt. The U S Department of Education is majorly corrupt. And, you know, we could keep going, you know.
You're saying this, are you, are you, you're in the teachers' union probably, right?
Yes, I am. I'm still an active member.
Wow, okay. So but you still see what's going on and are willing to call it out?
Uh, one hundred percent.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's, that takes a lot of um, you know, being brave and hopefully others then will follow in your footsteps. And I think they are. I think people are hopefully waking up.
I hope so, you know, and I'm very fortunate, I have to say, that I have great, um, a great attorney at Judicial Watch. And um Jim Peterson is so amazing. Judicial Watch has really helped guide me all along the way and uh, they are true heroes to me and true heroes, I, you know, now to parents and families in North Kingstown because they just submitted, uh, Mark Spencer, uh, who also is an attorney at Judicial Watch Attorney Spencer just submitted a wonderful APRA request basically asking for definitions of all the things that we've just talked about um, to sort of get some a handle, I suppose. I don't really know the real objective. I have no part in in the APRA, but I'm really, really grateful to Judicial Watch and the work that they're doing on behalf of children um in North Kingstown and families in North Kingstown, but also my own particular case as a teacher. So ultimately, what we're doing here reflects the broader um scope of the problem that we're seeing.
I think there's some optimism and I'd love to have you back on if we have issues. I know we're in different states, but it seems like we're all kind of connected in a way with what's starting to spread and happen. It's not just a California issue anymore.
No.
No. Okay, well, I'm gonna let you go. I'll send you a link later tonight that you can put out there and um just thank you so much and prayers for you and your family and you you're doing, you're doing great things.
Thank you very much for having me tonight on your show. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.